Alrighty then, so back in Nottingham again today, day two here. And decided to start with Brockstow Police Station. And purely because last night when I was chilling, I was watching some videos and I saw Nobody Pause video with Man Bun. About three months ago it was uploaded. And they entered the car park there. Well, Man Bun did and Man Bun was asked to leave, so he did. He started walking towards the gate there that you can see. And whilst he was walking away, the... Yeah, whilst he was walking away, he was physically forced to move. But he was already walking towards the gate. There was absolutely zero need to put hands on him at that point. You know, he was compliant, he was asked to leave, and he was. I think the issue was he wasn't leaving at the speed that they wanted. He wasn't being excessively slow, but he wasn't rushing out either. So yeah, that was three months ago. So we're gonna go and have a look around and see how they do today. So I just heard one vehicle got out on blues straight away. It is about five past ten past nine in the morning at the moment. Nine oh eight to do exactly. And the station officially opens at... At nine. So right next door they've got the Strelley Health Centre. And here you can see they've got a very big police van here. And they've got the... Some sort of plastic protector here on the... Over the front mirrors. They've got the riot shield that can drop down over the windscreen. So it's obviously for high volatility situations. And over this way, we've got a box all... Which... Some random brown paper bags in the back. But other than that, looks quite clean and tidy. Not very clean, needs to get Hoover out, I would say. Random co-op bag with all the emergency kit in the back. Pretty cool. And then we've got the IGO, which the parking attendant outside the central station told me yesterday is what they just use to get from one place to another. It's nothing that they... I thought it was a PCO, PCSO vehicle, since it doesn't have sirens or anything on. He just said it's not a response vehicle. It's just a sort of A to B vehicle, and that's what they use it for. There, you can see the gates here are wide open like they were when Man Bun and... Nobody Paul came here. And this is pretty much exactly what Man Bun did. He just kind of walked in like this. And that's when he was approached and asked to leave. Which he did. So up in the corner, they have police bicycles. Although they look quite unused for some time, judging by the dust gathering on the seats. Yeah, I wouldn't say that they've been used any time recently. So yeah. And yeah, so this is Brockstow Police Station. Number plates are all looking good though as I'm walking past. Can't say that I've seen anything wrong with them. So they have a disabled access round. This will get up to the... Front desk. Well, that's weird. Please use this telephone to contact Nottingham Police 101 Service. Or if you're unable to make a voice call or use your mobile to text. But I can't see a yellow phone over anywhere actually, which is odd. So it's like, ah, there it is, it's in the little box in there. Oh dear, so he's obviously seen me go in there and he's just come out and closed the gate. Didn't say anything to me, but just closed the gate and that was it. Should have hung around a little bit longer in there really, I think. Yeah, they have electric charging points in there. Have this on the door, knife grind, missile fact. Yeah, that's the door. It's not a public lobby station, can't push the way in or enter the building. Unfortunately. So yeah, that's a... That's a response now to Brockstow Police Station after three months of Nobody Paul being here. And has come and closed the gate, which it should be closed anyway. Not sure how it works with closed gates, because, I mean, it's closed it, but I don't think it's locked necessarily. So all he's done really is just put those poles down onto the floor. But I reckon if I were to pull that, it would open. Might grind against the floor a little bit. And that would be about it. Interestingly, the officer that came out didn't ask if I needed any help or assistance with anything. I could have been here looking for somebody, looking for an officer. Could have been here looking for assistance, but didn't ask. And yeah, that's an interesting start to the day. Yeah, I don't think we're gonna see much else happening from this station now. So we've got some vehicles going out pretty much as soon as they got here. One of them on blues. And yeah, it looks like they know what's up because they didn't engage. Just closed the gate, which they're entitled to do. So sort of, sort of happy days. Didn't really get to check if the... If they would have used force again to remove me, even if I was walking away out of the car park. And... Yeah, I mean, I don't really get what they've managed to achieve by closing the gates, because I can still pretty much feel everything that I can whilst being in there. You know, I can still see most of the vehicles. As you can see there. And yeah, there's nothing... It's a gain really from closing the gates. There we go. But ultimately, that is the correct response. They know that there's nothing they can do to stop us from filming, but there is something they can do to ensure their... Well, try to ensure their privacy by closing gates and keeping things locked up. And that is the extent of what they can do. So... There we go. So yeah, guys, I'll link Nobody Pause video of Man Bun being forced out of the car park. If you haven't seen it, I'm sure most of you have. If you follow and subscribe to me, I'm sure you probably follow and subscribe to Nobody Paul. And but yeah, I'll link it there just in case you haven't seen it. Definitely worth a watch. So then, guys, this is Nottingham Steel. And this one is Brockstow Borough Council Offices, but it's shared services. So that's where we're at. But they do have police located here as well. So this is a notice of meetings for 2022. If any of you are local and wish to attend any of these. Yeah, it was kind of a little nosey around at the vehicles. So police permit holders parking only past this point. So all of this area should be police permit holders only. Interesting. So yeah, the vehicles, again, Nottinghamshire are doing pretty well at keeping them clear of rubbish and other crap. So can't complain at that, that's all. Okay, there's a different ones. First one I've seen like this. So this one is an operation reacher. You can see the livery on it is black on the bonnet. Oh yeah, I think they have actually just put the black bonnet on a silver car. Just to make it look different. Operation Reacher, protecting our communities. So yeah, I wonder, I don't know what Operation Reacher is. I'll see if I can find some information online about it or something. It's interesting. And then they've got their little transport cars, their little IGOs. Their A to B roads, A to B cars. And so they've got a bicycle in there for a volunteer police cadet just underneath the stairwell. Some other strange bits and bobs. Not really sure what that is down there. So that's a very old policy. So they worry about, what they say, hostile reconnaissance. But then they literally put on the door, on due to the public, the full operation of how they do their shift changeover and what times and everything. So that's strange. So they do have a knife bin here. But yeah, it says they have a front counter, so we'll go have a look. It says they're only open for pre-booked appointments only. Get a better angle on that, the lights glaring off there. And the door keeps opening. So that's a poster for Citizens Advice Brockstow. So they've got some contact numbers there. So they've got battery recycling over side. Guide dogs charity box. That's good. So they've still got that poster up. And yeah. They've got a very old payphone. Interesting. So they have a Citizens Advice... Desk that is closed. And they have a public toilet. So it's a multi-youth one. And it's wheelchair accessible. Okay, so I got a door wedged open. It says staff only on it. I really shouldn't have that wedged open like that. They've got a brand room for vacant. That one's keypad accessible. First aid in there. It's just like an empty interview room. Oh yeah, that's rather... Oh yeah, your phone, yeah, sorry. Hiya, I'm just wondering if you have any information about when the Citizens Advice desk is open? No, I couldn't see it, I'll stop a minute. Oh yeah, it was just on the wall here. Sorry, I was looking on the front counter, but yeah, it's on here. Ten AM to one, it was closed on Wednesday, so sorry. Brilliant, thank you. But yeah, other than that... I'm just having a look at seeing what you've got on offer. Do you mind if I take one of these knife grime leaflets? Yeah, thank you. I'll open it up and show you guys in a second. Think bike stickers. I like the little police dog teddy you got there.
I'm going to have to... If there's nothing I can assist you with, I am sort of taking calls, if that's all right.
Yeah, of course, can, that's fine. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No worries.
Is there a reason why you're sort of videoing it?
Pardon?
Are you videoing it?
I'm just like, so it says council office and that as well. And so I'm just making a little sort of vlog sort of thing to show people what's around the local area, what services are available in the local council. Mostly you've got the shared police station, you've got the Citizens Advice. So just making a little vlog sort of thing really. But yeah, that's pretty much all. Alrighty. Interesting. So yeah, there you go. So this is Beeston Police Station. So it is an open inquiry office. Oh yeah, so it was closed yesterday, so I picked a good day to come and visit it. So there. So Brockstow Borough Council have a corporate plan. Be interesting to see how much of this has come to fruition in the first two and a half years. Interesting. And they have a computer available for you to come and use. You can do all these various fun things here. Nice and interesting. They have a... Yeah, it's customer self-service. Wonderful. They have the tram timetables available here. That one. So, hiya, you're right. Just all these letters along here. So they've got everyone's, sort of, they've got people's names and addresses and stuff on them. So obviously, you can see here that I can see all of somebody's personal information now. I can see people's names and addresses.
Right.
Obviously, that shouldn't be on display to the public.
No, I've just been sorting it, taking it to the...
I fully understand that, I fully understand that. So you're doing the work and I do appreciate that. But it's one of those kinds of jobs that needs to be done in a more private area where the public can't see that information.
Right.
So obviously, at the moment, I'm recording, just making a little video of what's around in the local council office.
Right, I don't want you recording me, thank you.
Okay, that's fine. But the issue is that if I were, if I wanted to, I could point my camera, I'd zoom in on people's names and addresses, and I could do anything with that information, you know. And it's not really an acceptable way for the council to handle people's private and personal data. So it's just something that really needs to be moved, like urgently.
Sure. Yeah, can you turn the camera off if you are pointing it at me?
Yes, because I'm having a conversation with you, yeah.
But I don't want you filming, so I'm going to go in the other place.
Okay, that's a bit weird, but okay. Yeah, other than that, that's pretty much everything that's on, that you can see. And they've got the council chamber down this end. So that's where that is. They have a sign there saying, "Stop, please make sure no one enters this building as you leave." Yeah, I think that is pretty much everything. Oh, I missed that one there. So that's who was officially opened by, Sir Andrew Buchanan. Don't know what BT stands for. Manchester's Lord Lieutenant of Nottinghamshire. Thanks Sergeant, appreciate that. Sergeant, yeah, Sergeant, yeah. Yeah, just the only thing that I would disagree with, with what you said, is that, you know, I clearly heard you say that we're wanting the confrontation, and that's not always true.
I'm not saying it's always true. And I kind of put the caveat with that is my personal experiences on occasion.
Yeah.
And that's as far as I'm prepared to go on the subject.
And that's absolutely fine. But yeah, no, I appreciate that you let her know that, you know, there's nothing wrong with what I'm doing.
No, you're not doing anything wrong.
Absolutely. But yeah, the only reason I interact with her in the first place is just because I understand it's her job and she's got to do it. But she was sorting out some mail that had people's names and postal addresses and everything on it. And just from that front counter, I could see it, I could zoom in, record it, I could put that online if I wanted to. It's not what I'm here for, it's not what I'm interested in. But obviously, that's a really serious breach of data policies and data law. And that's all I was letting her know, is just that, you know, that that needs to be a job that's done more privately and that mail needs to be moved.
That's fine, but the only thing I'd say is that that can be achieved without perhaps recording and... If that was a concern that you had, you could come in and have an open conversation with somebody without perhaps making them feel a little bit awkward about the situation.
Okay.
But that's up to you.
Yeah, but in that respect, when you approach conversations...
The qualifying thing to that is that, like, as you said, you've overheard what I'm saying, you're not doing anything wrong by being in a public space, by recording people. I've explained to that individual my experience as a police officer and what can tend to happen.
Yeah, yeah. I do appreciate some people can aggravate it too.
But they are my experiences, and I'm not saying that you're here in order to achieve confrontation, because I've been around here and you've been perfectly fine. I've seen you walking around and there's been no aggravation at all.
Yeah, I'm not here to go and aggravate people, it's not what I'm here for. Obviously, people are in this for different reasons. Some people are more aggravating than others, you know. But for me, it's just making sure things are done properly. I like to see what's on offer around as well, I travel all over. I like to see what's on offer in different cities, different towns, especially city councils and that. A lot of people don't realise what's on offer in these... A lot of people don't realise what's on offer in these buildings in this day and age.
And like I said, that, uh, employee there, apologies, I don't know where or what her role is in within, uh, the council organisation. You're not committing any offences by coming in. It's, it's a public space. You can, you can walk around.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, and I'm aware that you've been over Brockstow's side this morning.
Yes.
And I've had experience at, at our headquarters where there's people's personal vehicles coming and that.
Yeah, yeah.
You obviously heard me talk to that person then around, um, again. You're not doing anything wrong by doing it because you're in a public space, as are police vehicles. Um, but hopefully you can understand where police officers come from, from a point of view of being slightly protective over kind of their personal data. But that comes with a qualifying thing that you can say it's personal data, but you're in a public space. I, I get, I get.
Yeah, yeah. And it's sort of, it's also the, what I qualify that with is that, uh, when you join the police force, whether you join as staff or as a constable, you kind of take on knowing that risk of, of what, what the role brings.
Yeah, absolutely.
So you, you know, you know that that's a risk.
But obviously people are, are conscious going on from that around the, the yes, there is a risk, but then, you know, does, does that need to be, uh, that risk, does that need to be heightened or greatened?
Yeah.
Greatened, that's not a word if it is.
Yeah, I know what you mean, increased.
However, that's the one, increased. Um, so yeah. With that, with that kind of going over and over and over and over, uh, all, all the kind of grounds, uh, everything that was spoken about. I haven't got a problem with you being here, what it is you're doing and all the rest of it.
Brilliant.
Um, I was just addressing the concerns of somebody else.
Absolutely, fully understand.
That's been dealt with. I'm happy to speak to yourself.
Fantastic.
To, uh, to, to that point, but obviously I'm very busy at the same time, so I'm going to go through a lot of boards.
All right then. Sergeant 2473 Jason, lovely.
That's, that's the one.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good day. There we go, guys. So yeah, nice, uh, nice sergeant. So he said he's had some negative, uh, interactions, uh, in the past and that's his experience. Um, and hopefully this interaction has added to the more positive side of these interactions. So he understands that not everybody is here to to aggravate and cause trouble. Just wanna, you know, hold a conversation and, and, uh, yeah, make sure that things are done by the by. And I'm not going to go all the way over there, but I can see from here that that mail has been moved from the front counter. So happy days. It's, uh, that's what we like to see. So yeah, so we had a little tour of the building there, guys. I'd, um, noticed a, a data breach from the council and it was acted upon. And, uh, the sergeant did, uh, let her know what was going on, what the situation is, so. Um, I did hear him use words like unfortunately, which, uh, implies that he doesn't like the fact that there's nothing that they can do about it. However, um, he understands, which is the main point. So yeah, just kind of a quick look at this one, guys. Uh, knife crime, save a life in the knife. Let's have a look for a bit while it's loaded in. Oh, come on. It's got a bit of, uh, it is an offence to purchase or sell a knife to anybody under the age of eighteen, possess a knife on school premises, in a public place, hold on to a knife for use by a friend. Yeah, certain knives have been made illegal even to have in your own home in a private place now. So, there we go. That's the information that they have available on knife crime. As I said, it is definitely something that needs addressing in the UK. Um, cities are particularly prolific for it. And, uh, yeah. Yeah, I'd say that was a very positive interaction there, guys. And yeah. So like, comment and subscribe. And I'll see you on the next one. Until then, ta-ra.